This study session of the Board of Education for January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen is called to order. Welcome to everyone present, to our television viewers.
This meeting has been televised live. Thank you. And we replay throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. Interpreters are available in the five major languages. I'd like to ask interpreters to come to the speakers table at this time and introduce themselves where the -- and state where they're going to be located, which will be the lobby.
Buenas noches, me llamo Carmen Disney y estoy aquí para interpretar en español. Estoy en servicio de interpretación, voy a estar en la esquina derecha.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and let them pick the content of your, um, here. They don't want to hear my little take up on me.
Good evening, me llamo Tatiana. If you have an English language, I'll speak Russian language, so please, I'll try to say it's a zeddy.
So my name is, uh, I'm, 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 I'm,[247.21]
The things of free people need to spend their tax money on. Demonstrate, lobby, write your representatives, educate, agitate for the money we need for education, public safety, public health, and our infrastructure. And do not sit idly by as the goal of making money overtakes the value of the things our money pays for. It'll take me a while to say all I have to say in three-minute increments, but I'll be back. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you. Ms. Susan?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony tonight. Again, as I mentioned at the very beginning, we don't necessarily address and respond to those things right away, but they will be given consideration and staff will also be looking into some of those things that were raised. Our next item on the agenda is the Cleveland Cluster presentation. And tonight we will hear the fourth in our series of high school cluster presentations. These presentations feature in different high school cluster. Each month will allow allows the board to conduct a deeper dive on the milestones data at the school level. We have allocated one hour for this item, thirty-minute presentation max, thirty minutes for questions from the board and discussion. As a reminder, the milestones are on the board's work, work plan is a monitoring item for us to Penan Smith.
And I'll just start by welcoming our Cleveland Cluster principals, and they're totally representing across the front of the room here, so it's good to have you here. And Sue Ann Higgins, I'll welcome up to the front to introduce the presentation. And as Director Gonzalez said, this has been our opportunity to really get a view of what's going on in the cluster, what are the things that are really you're feeling proud of and that are working and that are getting really intentional results for our kids, and where are the places you are feeling challenges. So we look forward to hearing the picture of the Cleveland Cluster. Sue Ann.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome the Cleveland Cluster administrators as well as Trip Goodall, our high school director, and Larry DeShiel, the regional administrator for the Cleveland Cluster. Cleveland in southeast Portland comprises about sixty-five hundred of our Portland Public Schools students, more students than many whole districts in our state. So it's an honor to just have them share some of their stories. So you'll see portraits, specific portraits from four of our schools tonight and have the opportunity to hear from leaders of those schools. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Smith, Board Chair Gonzalez, and School Board members. It's just an honor and a pleasure to be able to be here tonight with the Cleveland Cluster. This is my third year as the RA, working with the Cleveland principals. And I also include the high school piece in that because I had a long career in the high schools and Portland Public Schools, so I know the administrators at Cleveland High School very well and also put them on my visiting rotation when I visit their environment. As you know, the RAs have been visiting schools and I try to get to them at least once a month on a regular basis to talk about equity, talk about milestones, talk about discipline, and talking about teaching and learning. And that's been a very, very pleasurable experience to be able to do that. And I'm glad the job presents itself that way. And so tonight we will have two elementary principals share, and one middle school principal, an assistant principal, and then our high school principal.
Yeah, again, it's great to be back and number four, so we're really looking forward to being able to present Cleveland.
So now I'm gonna have what I call the Sweet Sixteen introduce themselves. And then we'll have a presentation from Sarah Hahn at Dunaway and Susan McElroy at Grouse.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Bacon. I'm the principal at Hosford Middle School.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn John, Assistant Principal at Hosford Middle School.
I guess we'll stand, Kevin. Okay. Mark Sandyland, principal at Winter Haven. Hello, Tim Lawer, principal Lewis Elementary.
Susan McElroy, principal at Daniel Grouse Elementary School.
Kevin Taylor, Vice Principal, Cleveland High School.
Juanita Balder, Vice Principal at Cleveland High School.
Good evening. I'm Paul Cook, principal of Cleveland High School.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Hahn. I'm the proud principal at Dunaway Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Mary Patterson, principal at Woodstock Elementary.
And I'm Lori Clark. I'm the principal at Whitman Elementary.
Seth Jones, the Assistant Principal at Selwood.
And I'm Charlie Russell. I'm the principal at Selwood Middle School.
Good evening. Brian Anderson, Buckman Elementary Arts Focus.
Tammy Baron, principal at Abernathy.
Steve Powell, principal of Llewellyn.
Thanks. I'm Susan McElroy, and I'm the principal at Daniel Grouse Elementary School. And so I just want to give you a little snapshot of my school this evening, some of the things that we're doing, and some of the things that I'm most proud of at my school. We're located not too far from Hosford. We have a huge attendance area all the way from the river to Fortieth. We are in a building that looks like a lot of Portland Public School buildings, and we're pushing ninety at this point, but still in great shape considering how old our building is. One of the questions I frequently am asked is where did you get that name? And so Daniel Alexander Grouse is an early Portland superintendent from the nineteen twenties, and he has a school named after him after he passed away. He was an early advocate of something that we take for granted now, and that is having parks and fields with our school, but at the time that was a novel idea. You've probably have the demographics in front of you. I put them up here. We are a very diverse school, and the demographics themselves don't tell the whole entire story. We do have two refugee populations. Our Somali-Bantu students came to us in two thousand and five. We also have a number of Burmese refugee students. Our students represent more than twenty-four different countries and speak twenty different languages. Our milestones are up there. In addition, I put our overall reading and math scores. And if you're looking at the milestone data, our largest gap is between our black and white students and our English language learners. There's quite a bit of overlap. Most of our black students are English language learners, and then our special education students. One of our focuses has been our school climate. We have participated in both the foundations of safe and civil schools and are currently participating in the positive behavior intervention supports, intended to give staff the skills and tools to work with all students. We do use steps to respect and second steps as well as other anti-bullying programs. I do keep a full-time counselor, and we do have a couple of social service interns. They provide social service supports to families in need. We are a playwork school. Playworks is a program designed to really help students with conflict resolution. So I have a full-time coach who works with students. So all of my kids know, for example, the same games with twenty different languages. There's certainly room for misunderstanding. So for us, this really has been an excellent school climate piece and a leadership development piece for our students. We have a number of social service partnerships, and Grouse is a send school, so we have a Parks Department as a partner, providing after-school academic and other classes for the kids. In particular, we have tried very hard to be creative about maintaining an arts program, an arts focus, even though we're not a focus option school. We do have a theater program for kindergarten through fifth grade. We have a strong visual arts program, and we support that through residencies. And then we are working with a group called the Music Workshop to provide music for our students. We've also maintained a strong science program, particularly partnering with Reed College and the City of Portland Environmental Services and Parks to provide some of our education outside of our school. We now have two gardens, both a vegetable garden and a bio swale. Those are both courtesy of our PTA and the grant writing done by the PTA. And then, you know, lastly, I just want to point out that, as with most schools, we can't do it alone, and so this just gives you a little bit of idea of the number of community partnerships we have that support Grouse and the programs at Grouse.
Good evening. I'm so excited to talk to you about Dunaway. It's one of my favorite topics. So I decided in presenting to you tonight that I'm gonna focus the entire time on my milestone data. It isn't by accident that we're a high-achieving and high-performing school. There are a lot of systems and structures that we have in place that not only have gotten us to where we are, but are continued growth, and so I'm gonna go through those. So all of the slides and the data, you'll see I've isolated the third-grade data. So in looking at our third-grade demographics data, if you look over the last two years, this is my third year at Dunaway. I started in two thousand and ten. The first cohort of third graders that we had, close to twenty-five percent of my third-grade students were students of color. And I think that's important to recognize, and you can see our, all of the demographics data over the last three years. We have more third-grade students now than we did when I came to Dunaway. Although our, our current cohort this year, and the kids were moving towards the milestone, we do have fewer kids of color in third grade this year. We are at twelve percent for our special ed students. When we talk and we think about the milestone data at Dunaway, it isn't just about third grade. We know that starting early and talking about kinder first and second grade is just as important, if not more important than what we're doing in the third grade. Our milestone data for third grade, reading to learn. We know that if we're gonna read to learn, our focus is on comprehension. In our, in reading research, you can see the connection between vocabulary and comprehension. We focus a lot on vocabulary. When students know fifty percent or fewer words in a passage, their reading comprehension drops. And so if we're talking about reading to learn and students understanding what they're reading, we really want to focus on vocabulary, and we do that at Dunaway. Over the last two years, last year, for the last two years, we have an increase in the number of students meeting or exceeding our milestone benchmark, an eight percent increase for our white students. We have one hundred percent of our Hispanic students that met standard last year. And we'll talk a little bit about the invisible data that you don't see on here in just a few minutes. We've also had an increase of five percent for all of our students meeting milestone data in the last two years. So it's expectation of Superintendent Smith and Larry DeShiel, our regional administrator, that we have two things, improved achievement for all students. At Dunaway, we've demonstrated that, narrowing the gap between groups. And when we compare our Hispanic students to our white students, at times they're outperforming white students. So one of the things I want to point out, though, and I love data, and I really like data analysis, is where at a glance, you might look at the Dunaway data, and it is something to celebrate, be proud of, but I'm always looking to read between the lines. And when I do, and I look, and I analyze our milestone data in the first year that I was there, what's important to know is that all of our students, and again, this is two thousand and ten to eleven data, we had sixteen students of color. But when you look at the way the data is presented, when there's a subgroup, a racial subgroup, where you have less than six students represented, the data becomes invisible. And so when you look at that, and you can see that from one of the earlier slides, there wasn't a graph there, although there were maybe five students or four students in that racial category. And it's, my expectation myself as an instructional leader, I think as a principal, that we make sure and we don't let data become invisible, especially when we're talking about racial data. So we did have one hundred percent of the students, Hispanic students, meet the milestone. Here's the invisible data. The ten students of color that you didn't see on the graph, which represented fifteen percent of my third-grade students, they weren't reported because the subgroup may have had less than six kids. So that's where us tracking students individually and having conversations monthly in data teams is very important. And we do that at Dunaway. When we look at last year, here's where we read between the lines again. We did have one hundred percent of our white students meet or exceed the standard, the milestone, but ninety-seven percent of all students met or exceeded. So of course, we can assume that the nine students, of course, spread across racial subgroups, there are some students there who didn't meet. When we isolate that, we want to know who these kids are. We're expected to know every student, where they're at and where they're going. And we know that when we look at that invisible data, four of those students were Hispanic, and five of them were multiracial students, and some of them didn't meet the milestone, even though they didn't show up on our data. So how do we respond at Dunaway to visible and the invisible data? There's a lot that we do. We know where every child's performing one hundred percent of the time. We use qualitative and quantitative methods for collecting data on our students. I mean, monthly with teachers, they're accountable for their data, they're accountable for their teaching, and we have conversations about that, and they're accountable to each other. Although we have had reading support in the past, we don't this year, but that just means we need to work harder as a team to get kids where they need to be. We focused the last two years on our professional development for differentiated instruction. Even though we're a high-performing school, we have students who are on IEPs and have goals. We have students that don't speak English or have limited English proficiency, and it's expected that all teachers learn how to and implement differentiated instruction. And my role as an instructional leader in the classroom is providing feedback to them on what they need to do to help move kids forward in their learning. And, and we spend time on that, too. So our largest gap, or our achievement gap at Dunaway, lies between our general ed students and our students on IEPs and our special ed students. Last year, we had eight third-grade students on IEPs. We worked closely between our special ed staff and our general ed staff, and we had seventy-five percent of those students meeting the milestone at the end of the year. This year, we're on track to have all nine students of our third-grade students that are on IEPs meet the milestone. So things that we do to respond to our gap that exists have to do with the connection between our general ed staff and our special ed staff, and having consistency in our program implementation so that staff, general ed staff and special ed staff are working together on getting kids to their goals and reaching their potential. We also involve parents in the conversation of what we're doing and why we're doing it. We outline their role for how to help, help their child succeed and how to work closely with the school. So, and finally, you know, we want to continue to grow as a school. We want to move every kid forward. And, and so there's some things that we have in place that create sustainable growth. It's our sustainable growth model, so that each year we're moving ahead. And here's some of the things specific to the milestone data. We're talking about reading, we're talking about literacy. We maintain an emphasis on quality instruction, especially at K-two, of course, school-wide, focusing on the big ideas, the five areas, implementing our core reading program at the district with fidelity. One thing that we've done at Dunaway, too, is evaluating what we do with kids while we're in a guided reading group. What are the rest of the kids doing when they're functioning and working independently in the classroom? We use research-based activities and tasks that we expect kids, we want kids to be able to work independently, but also know that they're growing in their skills to get them where they need to be, even if they're not working directly with a teacher or volunteer. We continue to collect a variety of assessment data that helps to inform our instruction, especially in the primary. And we keep the invisible data visible. It's really important that we know where every kid is, and, and we have systems in place at Dunaway to do that. And so when we look at our data as a school, it isn't by accident that we've been able to grow at third grade, the number and the percentage of students meeting the milestone. We have a very intentional plan, and I was really excited to share it with you tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Selwood Middle School. Seth, and Charlene.
Well, good evening. I'm very thrilled to be able to represent Selwood Middle School and its community. We have a very strong tradition in the Selwood community of connection with our school. Our school is almost a hundred years old. The building was built in nineteen fourteen, so we're coming up on our big anniversary. We have very skilled and committed staff who know and appreciate mid-level learners. We have wonderful middle school students who, at times, are utterly fabulous and a joy to teach every day. Also, we have a very strong parent community that is involved in our school and has supported the school and been involved along with the community for a hundred years. We have a strong academic program there. Our percentage of students reading at the benchmark level for six through eight is about eighty-seven percent. Math is about eighty percent. And in addition to the strong academic program that we've been able to maintain at Selwood, we have a wonderful array of electives. And the one elective program is highlighted by a fabulous instrumental music program that we're very happy and thankful for, that we've been able to hold on to. We have five different bands, advanced, intermediate, and beginning band, jazz band, and two marimba bands. Fifty percent of our students, three hundred, two hundred and thirty kids are, and the students are involved in and play an instrumental instrument at Selwood. And we have wonderful concerts, and I'd love to have you join us. Those bands perform all over the city and the region. They were the only metropolitan, we were the only metropolitan school that performed at the middle school, National Middle School Conference in November. We're also really thankful to be able to have foreign language. We offer Spanish for high school credit and also Chinese. We have a strong visual arts program and physical education. A lot of our challenge has to do with making sure that every single student, a hundred percent of our students, are ready for high school and ready to be successful in high school. And we've put in place, increasingly put in places, place to support all of the students at Selwood. You'll be hearing a little bit more about that, and particularly focusing on eliminating the predictable achievement gap that is at Selwood with children of color and also disabled children. We've been involved in intensive equity work in our, with our staff last year and this year particularly, and also have had PSYOP training. We redesigned our master calendar in the last two years and reclaimed increased instructional time. It actually ended up being an increase of eleven and a half school days of instruction with the redesign of our schedule. We went to an A/B schedule for the sixth and seventh grade. So the sixth and seventh graders have an additional Language Arts Social Studies period every other day, and that allows them to, to focus in on writing instruction and also reading, which will help as we try to meet the standards in the new Common Core State standards. It also allows the sixth and seventh grade Language Arts Social Studies teachers to only teach Language Arts Social Studies and not an elective, and so that they have, you know, two classes, sixty kids, that they're focusing on. So that's quite an advantage for reading and writing instruction. We also do, have done a mock writing test. As you probably know, that the state has done on-demand direct writing assessment for years and hasn't in the last two years because of funding problems. So we have hired a state scorer to come in, paid for it out of our consolidated budget, so that our students still have that direct writing assessment in the fall and in the spring. Helps inform instruction and also gives feedback to students and teachers and parents on how the kids are doing in writing, scored by someone who's totally objective and it's uniform across every single child in the sixth and seventh grade for the writing information. We have been working, too, quite extensively on discipline and, and also helping kids, the struggling students. And Seth, my colleague, Seth Jones, who's assistant principal, is gonna tell you more about that.
All right. Thanks, Charlene. So my name is Seth Jones. I'm the assistant principal at Selwood. And part of being an assistant principal is you get to work with discipline quite a bit. And when you're in a middle school and you're with middle schoolers, there's a lot of discipline issues that can come up. So we try to have a positive spin on it, and I know we're trying to avoid acronyms as much as possible, but PBIS is Positive Behaviors, Interventions, and Supports. I know we talk about this in schools a lot, but it really comes down to a four-to-one ratio, where you want to have four positives for every one corrective bit of feedback. This works with your kids, it works with spouses, too, from, from what I'm told. So a big part of what we're doing is we're trying to do this, we're also trying to make our expectations really explicit. So we make a big to-do of last year. So this is the second year that we've been involved with Student Services and the PBIS rollout. Another thing that we're just really thankful for, that I'm really thankful for in the district, is Student Services and how supportive and reliable and proactive they are. So the, we've had, Drew Lawrence is a PBIS coach. He comes out and he leads our staff through the CHAMPs training. CHAMPs is another acronym, but it's, it's a student management curriculum, essentially. So it helps us, helps our teachers, helps us think about how we set up our students for success, how we handle those challenging questions as they come up. So that's been, that's been a big help. And so we've done that during our, our late starts. Once a month, we show discipline slides. So the slide over here, looking at our three-year discipline comparison, I'll get to momentarily, but we do look at our discipline data once a month, and then we talk about, so where are students getting in trouble, what time of day? We look for other patterns and other things that they have in common, so we can try to anticipate and catch kids before they actually get into trouble. We have a great PBIS team. It's myself, our counselor, five fantastic teachers. We meet once a month, and we talk about what are ways that we can get positive feedback to students? What are we, what are ways that we can adjust our practices to keep students from getting into trouble? So right after the winter break, we had planned this out in December, we did something called a station-rotation activity. So we had nine stations within the building for nine common areas. So you've got your hallways, your cafeteria, your gymnasium, and the bus. We've been having troubles on our school bus, which I know it's unthinkable, the middle school buses and problems, but we actually, the district was great. We had a bus pull-up right out front when it dropped students off in the morning, and this was my station, so I was on the bus. And there was another PBIS team member in the hallways, and Charlene was in the cafeteria. So then we had divided the school up, so they took the students around in nine different groups, and they had seven minutes at each station. So we got all of the students in the school at nine different times on the bus, and I was able to, with a driver on there, show them there's a camera in front of the bus, there's a camera in the back of the bus. This is what you do, this is what you don't do, and if you do this, and if you flick rubber bands, you're gonna be suspended from the bus. So it was just a way of trying to keep it light and fun, at the same time, serious, because everyone's got a right to feel safe on the bus. Anyway, we've been doing things like this, and we've been having tremendous success. So if you look up at this slide over here, we are the blue line this year. So the green line was the year before, and the black line was the year before that. So we've made great strides as far as this year, and I didn't include our suspension data because I don't want to take up too much time, but this year we've had five out-of-school suspensions. Last year we had had thirty-four. So it's really, really working, so we really appreciate it, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, you have about five minutes remaining.
Paul, time to close it out, Cleveland. Four high schools.
Superintendent Smith and board members, it is with considerable pleasure that I introduce Cleveland's principal, Paul Cook. Paul has the distinction of being the longest-standing high school principal in PPS.
But not the oldest.
I thought I was giving this some considerable weight there, but the laughter's. He's served at Cleveland for over ten years, and since arriving at Cleveland over a decade ago, Paul's established strong partnerships with his community and his alumni. He's established a robust IB program, created successful ninth-grade academies to personalize learning, and created opportunities for students needing additional assistance in core content areas. Additionally, he led a successful campaign to redo the athletic field and track. He believes in providing students with opportunities inside and outside the classroom to keep them engaged and committed to learning. In two thousand and twelve, U.S. News &amp; Row report recognized Cleveland- to learning. In 2012, U.S. News &amp; World Report recognized Cleveland as a silver medal awardee and as a high school in the top 10 of Oregon. So truly, it's a, he's a phenomenal person to work with, a great colleague, Paul Cook.
Thanks, Trip. I have a few minutes, five, 10 minutes. I, I'll go as quick as I can. I know you have our profile in front of you, but I want to review a couple of things there and try to give you a best snapshot of Cleveland as I can in just short amount of time. As I described the successes and challenges at Cleveland High School, please understand the teaching and support staff have had to adapt to some very far-reaching types of reductions over the past couple of years, actually several years, but staffing, through staffing and budget, and that they continue to do great work on behalf of our students and families. So just as we talk through these, these points, obviously, remember those points. We have a great staff. And enrollment characteristics, it's on, it's on the profile, our breakdown of students as far as ethnicity, as well as our free reduced lunch program, and number of tag students. I won't go into that. I do want to say that by the senior year, our students make some decisions. And they, in planning college, for college, 6% of our students plan to go to a four-year college and 24% plan on going to a two-year college. The rest of the students are either undecided, military, or into the workforce. I want to talk about assessment. First of all, our state assessment scores on meeting and exceeding, as far as all students in reading, 93% of our students have met or exceeded. In math, 76 percent. In science, 72 percent. And in writing, 89 percent. But I want to break it down by ethnicity. And I want to break it down by just student numbers itself, not by percentages. So you get the feel of that we're talking about actual students that are not passing these tests. So breakdown by ethnicity in reading, these are students that have not passed. So the number of African-American students that have not passed the reading test is six. Six students have not passed. And that's six too many. American Indian, Alaskan Native, two students. Asian, five. Hispanic, seven. And white, 12 students have not passed yet. In math, using the same have-not-passed, African-American, nine students. American Indian, Alaskan Native, seven. Asian, seven. Hispanic, 10. And white, 63 students. Special populations, ELL, 14 students have not passed. SPED, 12. And free-reduced, 18. But I want to pay particular attention to the ELL students. 14 students have not passed. We had one student pass. I'll get to that and our challenges. I want to talk more about that, but I really wanted to make that visible. With regards to writing scores, the number of students not passing, they compare very closely to our reading scores. Our 10th-grade milestone, students earning six credits and more, as well as reaching 90% attendance and better. Overall, 78% of our students have met that benchmark. Breakdown by ethnicity, American Indian, Alaskan Native, 63% have met the benchmark, the milestone. Asian Pacific Islander, 91%. African American, 79%. Hispanic, 76%. Multiethnic, 81%. And white, 78%. Our four-year cohort graduation rate milestone, overall, 80% of our students have met or have graduated in four years. Breakdown by ethnicity, American Indian, Alaskan Native, 86%. Asian Pacific Islander, 83%. African American, 88%. Hispanic, 70%. Multiracial, 62%. And white, 81%. Even though we were highlighted last year as one of the two high schools in Portland that saw a double-digit increase in the graduation rate, which is great, we still have a long ways to go. Looking at the percentages, they should be 100%. Academics, I want to talk briefly about our International Baccalaureate Program. We have been up and running for about the past 10 years at Cleveland High School. We've seen a lot of growth in the number of students that have been enrolling into IB classes. Currently, 66% of our students enroll into at least one or more IB classes. And that's in the junior, senior year. 66%. Ninth-grade academy, or ninth-grade academy work has also helped prepare students for the academic careers of IB. Through their organization skills, they learn, and they do interdisciplinary work by writing across the curriculum in their academy. So it is a nice kind of precursor for IB. IB is recognized by colleges as a rigorous academic program that prepares students very well for college. Colleges have noticed the skill, the college readiness, and the retention rate has increased for students who have completed IB coursework in their high schools. I want to talk briefly about our Mandarin immersion program. We begin at Wistock Elementary, then they continue on to Hossford, and then they come to us at Cleveland High School. The program offers content-based courses that are taught in Mandarin with the aim of students becoming bilingual and biliterate with a high level of multicultural understanding. Our ninth-grade academy, that's been in place for almost 10 years now, we have five academies. So every freshman student is in an academy. The academies are not tracked, meaning there's not an honors, honors academy. Students can do an honors contract within any one of the academies, but they are all mixed. So we have all academic. We spread out special ed students, academic priority kids, our ELL students. They're all spread out to the different five academies. We have a very strong performing visual art program. We have band, we have choir, and we have drama. We have drama, by the way. Everybody. Got to say that when you're in a high school, don't you? We also have beginning art classes and go on into intermediate and advanced art classes, as well as IB art classes. We also have ceramics. Last year, we began an AVID program. And AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. It's a wonderful program. We currently have a ninth-grade class and a split 10, 11th-grade class. AVID class that offers student support and rigorous courses in all content areas. The classes help with the opportunity gap, giving students more access. 75% of the students in AVID are students of color. The goal is to have 100% of our students ready for college entrance. Equity work with our staff. We've been working on our professional development for the past year and a half. We have a strong equity team made up of teachers and administrators. 10 of us are on that committee that plan professional development each month. We are making great strides in a lot of awareness and looking at our instructional practices and how it's affecting kids. And we have more work to do there. PD on our professional development on teacher grading practices. Trip and I have had numerous discussions, discussions around grading practices at the high school level. We have begun our professional development work around that, looking at grading practices. For example, looking at the power of zero, when students earn zero on a, on a written exercise or homework. And what does that mean? And what kind of impact does that make on their grade? So a lot more discussion on that and a lot more professional development. Our instructional coach has been so valuable. John Golden is a gem. And I will speak later about one of the challenges in making sure that we continue with our instructional coaches, such as John Golden at our school. So, the challenges. I have a few challenges that I want to just give to you and let you know. And then I want to finish it up with some honors. So one of the challenges is, has been the cut in special education. We've had, we had a cut one and a half FTE last year. We do not have a B program. All students are, are split or spread out within the special ed teaching staff. We have a larger caseload for our special ed teachers. That's making an impact. It's hard to get as personalized as we used to. We have a small number of ELL student population. We have around 50 students. With less students, you have less support. You have less FTE. And that makes a difference, too. We're challenged with ELL students and without the newcomer program has affected us. We don't have the sheltered classes as some schools may have. We don't have that. And obviously, part of it's due to just a smaller number of students than we have. Instructional coach, like I mentioned before, is so important. Last year was the first year we had an instructional coach, and we had him for the whole, for a full-time position. He did more in just professional development for our staff. He's working with teachers, working with teachers one-on-one, something that teachers love to have, to have another eyes in the classroom besides an administrator, but one of their peers in the classroom, working with them and coaching them. Very, very important. Ninth-grade support. Last year, we had, in the last few years, we've had academic priority monies to support our students. And this year, we don't. Last year, we were able to use some of that money to allow teachers to work with students during intercessions. Intercessions are times that at the end of the quarter, end of the semester, it helps students, gives them that boost that maybe they're, they're, they're just failing a class and get that extra boost to pass the class. And we had a lot of success with that. The, also, we lost our support classes. Last year, we had 15 ninth-grade support classes. This year, we have three. We can't keep up the numbers. When you look at comparing classes, not just compare IB, an IB class that has 40 kids in there, and a support class that has 10. And with the bit, with the, with the 180 number, trying to balance out teacher loads, it's pretty difficult. So when you have a comprehensive high school that has all these things going with IB, with support classes, with academies, with immersion, with arts, that's great. I'm painting a good picture of a great, of a very good comprehensive high school, but there's needs. And we all know that. I'm not, I'm a, there's not a blame game. I'm just, I'm just.
If you can wrap it up, we'd really appreciate it.
What's that?
If you can wrap it up, we'd really appreciate it.
I will.
So we can have a time for discussion.
I will. I'm right here. This is it. I want to end on a high note. I kept that, challenges in the middle, or at nearly the end, but I'm going to end with a high note. I want to talk, I want to say that the Oregon Department of Education released report cards for every public school district throughout the state. We earned an outstanding, great reflection of our, of our staff and students. Recently, the Oregonian announced the top 10 schools in each classification. The Oregonian Cup is awarded to schools that exhibit a combined excellence in academics, activities, athletics, and sportsmanship. This past fall, in the 5A state, we earned six in the state. Last spring, Trip mentioned, we've earned a top 10 in the state in the U.S. News &amp; World Report, and a top 4% in the country. And activities athletics, it's been a great year for our student athletes. We have around 900 student athletes competing in a fall, winter, spring sport. We currently have over 30 active charter student clubs. Our speech and debate team earned its third district title and earned first in state honors. Drama department performed very well this past fall, winter. And, and, and we have spring performances coming up. Jazz band, great job. First and second place finishes in very prestigious competitions. Last spring, our choir placed first in PLO competition and also first in the state. We have a great parent community. They support us. They support us with the auction, with the foundation. They do everything they do, can do. They sell pepperoni sticks. They sell everything they can, besides the clothes off their back, to support the school. And our alumni are amazing. Our alumni are just fantastic. And what they've helped us do, and like Trip mentioned about some of the bigger projects that we did, they were a major player in making those things happen for Portland kids, not just for Cleveland kids, but for Portland kids. To use that field, if you ever drive by the Cleveland field, just watch how many kids are using that on the weekends or after hours. Teams that are practicing on that, that have a muddy field to practice for state playoffs, like Grant High School, have come over and use our, our turf for practice. That's pretty dang cool. And then lastly, this is it. Our students have had some many successes, successes over the past several years, which is due in part to strong preparation from our elementary and middle schools. Yes. And our high school teachers and staff have prepared them well for their next journey into college, military, or the workforce, along with the continued support of their parents. We can expect our students have acquired a solid foundation to become successful citizens. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So now for our time to be able to ask some questions or to have some discussion in regards to the presentation from pleasure from Cleveland. Or comments, or?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to all of you. And Paul, I want to say thank you especially for pointing out the challenges. You don't have to apologize for those. We know that there are challenges. And it, I think it helps us when we're making our decisions around budgeting, to know what those challenges are and how prior cuts have affected your schools. And so we really do appreciate you highlighting those things for us. And we wish you didn't have them.
I had a general question I'd love to ask sort of the K5 middle school and high schools, maybe some representative responses. If our governor and state legislators came up with more funding than is currently on the table, and you were each given another $100,000 to play with, you've talked about amazing programs, amazing teachers and counselors and, you know, all kinds of things. If you could help us understand what would have the most impact if you had a little bit more money at each of your levels, I'd love to hear that.
Thank you. Great question. Brian Anderson, Buckman. I think the hardest part in my four years at Buckman has been the loss of our support staff. We, when I first got there, we had a reading support and we had math support. And, you know, it really, and with the difference in the test scores changing the last couple of years, our kids have always been one or two points away from the next level. And I think that our, our special ed kids are doing very, very well in comparison to our gen ed kids, which I'm really proud of. But it's been noticed by the teachers, by the community, even by the students, that that small group support for the kids that are really struggling. I feel we're really tackling the enrichment opportunities, and I think we're really tackling those middle-level kids that are succeeding. But we have really, all the cuts have happened with our support staff. And they were amazing. And they met with the kids, pulled them out at times that didn't affect that their learning. But it really helped them. And I've really seen a difference in the data. And we've been focusing on parent enrichment opportunities for kids and support opportunities, but it's just not the same when it comes to having those professionals in, working with those kids. That's what I would do.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And I'm Tammy Baron at Abernathy. And we've grown from a small school to a school now of over 500. And I have to say the same thing as Brian. I have no counselor. I'm the counselor. One secretary, me, no paras. And so you, we've made some incredible improvement, but that's because of our strong parent population. And we have parent tutors throughout the building. But what I don't have, I have no reading support. What I used to have was a reading teacher. And those are one of the things that has eaten away at what we've been able to do. And so it's those kids that are struggling, both emotionally and academically. And even though there aren't a lot of them, there are enough that makes it very difficult in that way. So when you ask what's really helped, it is that those extra adults in the building that can give someone the time to spend with them.
I'll speak for Cleveland High School. Give me another teacher. $100,000, a teacher, teacher and a half, I don't care, teacher and a quarter, I need more classes. I need smaller class size. And I want to keep our special programs intact, like AVID. I need teachers to teach, to teach our kids. And that's a support program for our kids.
I've already talked a lot, but I would also provide support for summer school, for those schools that have high populations, particularly of English language learners. To have kids out of school for three months and not getting any reading or English support is a, is a long time. And it makes it much more difficult for those kids to catch up.
Hi, I'm Tim Lauer at Lewis. You said about $100,000?
Whatever.
I just want to impress upon, I mean, it's, it's helpful for us to hear it as we go into the budget cycle. But it's also, I think, helpful for our governor and our legislators to understand that this money has a real impact. And so that's why I'm trying to understand.
Our particular program at first grade, we have 32 kids at each class. We have 33 at second grade. So if I had that amount of money, I would buy a teacher and do a blend at one, two. Lewis is one of the eight or nine schools that used to be a Title I school. And as a result of that, we have, of our 63 kindergarten students, we have, I believe, 11 on our half-day. So they're, they're missing out on a full-day experience. And then the class size. And because of the adjustments and such, we've had to make those kind of shifts.
Other questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Sure. So what we can hear is a lot of data, a lot of standardized test scores, and clearly
are, what students are working on. Cleveland mentioned their speech and debate team and other various programs, and I'd like to hear more about those sort of things in your schools.
So, I have the mic. I'm very, all of our students at Lewis have music twice a week. We have a tremendous music teacher who, with before and after-school programs, probably works with about 120 students with recorder club, strings, instrumental band, and an orf ensemble. These guys, fantastic.
Mary Patterson at Woodstock. So, we have the Mandarin immersion program at Woodstock, which feeds into Hosford and then Cleveland, so it's a unique school in the sense that we have a neighborhood school that comes from people who live within our catchment area, and then we have people from all over the city who come in through the lottery. So, the Mandarin program pulls in after-school activities, which include a Chinese dance class, which really lends itself to teaching more widely about the culture of China, and then students who are in the neighborhood program, we have teachers who join us as exchange teachers from China, and I make a point of having them go into the neighborhood classrooms and teach the children some basic Mandarin and a little bit about the culture so that we try to operate as one school and not two schools within one building. But linking both questions, your question Bobby about what to do, I think it's a very similar story across the district in terms of as we lose staff, then as principals, we're faced with what do we cut? Do we cut music? Do we cut PE? Do we cut our counselor? For a building with over 500 students, a neighborhood program and an immersion program, when we're cut, I'm trying to balance the immersion staff with my neighborhood. I can control the numbers coming into the immersion, I cannot control the numbers coming into my neighborhood, and that's growing. So, I have a kindergarten class of 33 in the neighborhood, how do I balance that with my immersion classrooms? I have a halftime counselor now with 500 and some kids, no music, but I do have PE. So, we have lots of different activities going on, and each school is very rich in what it can provide. I think we're all struggling to continue to provide that level of richness.
So, I know we could, I would love to hear more about the different activities. Sorry, is that okay? No?
Yeah, okay, sorry. Want to hear more about the different activities, but in light of the time, I want to just call out and commend Salwood on your outstanding results on the discipline, and I know we're waiting to hear as a board, the update from the discipline policy in terms of results district-wide and by cluster, so looking forward to more, hopefully similar data soon. So, I guess it's more just a comment and maybe a question out to your regional administrator or, and/or the superintendent, just in terms of, are we seeing the same level of, you know, A, the ability to invest? Sounds like the professional development has been key in this, but also B, just the accountability and the focus that we're clearly seeing at Salwood in terms of really focusing in on getting this type of result, which is what, exactly what we're looking for.
Yes, one of the things that I talk with all the principals about and their APs is discipline, and we go over what happened last month and how many, and, you know, looking at the decrease, and we also look at the students. Who are your students? Students of color, you know, are they white students? As you know, the Cleveland region population, we have a combination, and many of them, in their situation, would be white students, because that's a larger part of the population. Or are they special needs students in the different classrooms that you may have? So, we have a good sit-down, we look at the discipline, we look at the situation that may have happened, and some of them at the elementary level don't have much discipline at all, and others, it starts to creep up as they get older and other things start to come into play.
Thanks, and do you have a sense in terms of the investment and the challenges in terms of the budget, that this is going to, is going to have an impact as well? In other words, are we going to have challenges in being able to maintain the professional development and the other pieces that have really been key?
Yes. Some of the schools are able to do PBIS. At one time, we were doing safe and civil schools some time back, and a lot of schools got involved, but it didn't continue, so now we're moving into the positive behavior intervention supports, but that's also depends on how principals are able to balance their money, if they can do that or not do that. Some of our Title I schools, and last year, we had a few people who were sitting here were Title I schools, and had some additional funds and services, and they're no longer Title I schools anymore.
Right.
Not so much that they don't have a different student population, but that we changed the formula, and so that took funding away from them when we had to do that, and then programs that they had in place aren't there. And, and I just have to say, I greatly appreciate the efforts of the, the high schools, having been a high school principal and knowing you have a couple assistants to back you up. I greatly appreciate the middle schools, having been a middle school principal, and knowing you have a couple of APs, or at least one to back you up, and usually at least a halftime counselor, but many of the elementary folks, it's them and their secretary, and then maybe the next person who's able to be out and about is their custodian, you know, and then their kitchen help. And when you're dealing with four, five-plus-hundred students, that's a lot of little bodies with a lot of little issues that come with that, and so I think the job is getting extremely challenging, especially for people who are running solo in a lot of these buildings with some of the challenges that are just coming up when we don't have those supports in place.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
Question? I want to go back to, to Paul, and the cohort graduation rate, I mean, this is a really great chart of, with really big gains last year, and I, and some fantastic gains with kids of color, and so can you give us a couple of lessons learned? What, is there something, anything you could point to where you went, this is what we did that really made a difference with these kids?
Yeah, this, this class, specifically the, the senior class, was the, one of the years when we, as ninth graders, as, in their ninth grade academies, they were assigned to mentors, so teachers of the ninth grade academy as well as administrators and counselors. We all had four to five kids that we mentored, and we checked in all year long, and we felt like that made a real impact, and set them, it was a connection that we had all for, for the whole four years. I knew four to five students very, very well, more than I ever knew them before, because I met with them all the freshman year and then continued on to, throughout their rest of years. Also, I have to say, our credit retrieval program helped. It allows students to stay at Cleveland to retake classes and earn credit that they had failed before. It's not that they hadn't taken them, they, they failed them, and they were, many of them were close to passing, so they didn't have to go to night school and change their whole schedule around to make that fit, because they also, many of them worked, or in other activities, so they stayed engaged to the high school, and we kept them there, and that was, that was a great part, so I think both of those things really, really made a difference.
So, have you continued those things going forward? I mean, you said that class, you were able to do that.
Well, yeah, part, you know, with the mentoring piece, there was some, obviously some hours involved in paying teachers, you know, yeah, it was only a couple hours, and they put in many, many, many more hours than that, but that was, that was part of it. The credit retrieval, we have a few classes in credit retrieval this year, but again, it's a staffing issue. How many classes can we really afford to, to offer?
And you're doing your intensives again, too. You made that decision.
We had our intensive last year. We had 15, and this year, we have three, so.
What, what is that?
The support classes, freshman support classes. Our academic priority kids are usually in our intensive classes, getting extra help from ninth grade academy teachers. We just don't have as many this year compared to last year.
You don't have as many classes?
Of support.
But you, you have the same number of academic priority kids coming in?
Oh, sure. Oh, yes.
And you just couldn't?
Right.
Get the class numbers?
Right.
High enough?
Right.
No, they, they're intentionally smaller.
So, last year, I think the average was probably around 10 students a class, but when you lose that FTE, it's really difficult to offer classes of 10 students, so.
The, the other difference too, though, is we made a difference, we made a choice to have more academies this year. We have five academies, and in the past, we've had a lower number, or maybe we had five academies but more students, so we, we just said, as a ninth grade academy, we're going to make our academy smaller. If we can't have all the support classes that we knew we couldn't have, let's try to make our academies a little smaller, and so we did that by having less students coming into Cleveland as freshmen, and then spreading those students out within five academies, so instead of having 35 kids in an academy, they're more like 28, 29. So, that helps. That, that, that will help this year, for sure, but they don't have that double-block class of support.
I want to, you know, thank you for your, you know, for that information, because I, you know, we were here at that point, I think, when we were beginning to have those interventions, you know, for ninth grade, but I'm not sure that we have gotten fully an understanding in regards to what was effective in regards to, you know, the, the different strategies that were applied. I remember your presentation when you came to the board and that, you know, excitement, I think, in regards to the, you know, saying, I'm going to have four or five?
Yeah.
Students that I'm going to get to know, and that other adults in the building are also, you know, making that commitment to do that, and, and I think it, it does make a difference.
Yes.
Also, I want to thank you and appreciate the fact that you, you know, mentioned the actual numbers of students in regards to what that means, because sometimes we, you know, we get kind of comfortable with the idea that, you know, percentages, you know, are, you know, that, that looks better, but yes, it doesn't.
Exactly.
It, it doesn't have a, a better outcome for those other students that are not making it within that percentage, and I think that we, we lose, you know, quite a bit of that in, in regards to, I think, the, the continual commitment to those 12 students that are not making it, because, you know, we say, you know, we, we made the target, but.
Right.
At what cost?
Right.
So, thank you. I don't know if there are other comments. I mean, one of the things that I, that I saw, and I've seen this at other reports, is the drop in math in some of the schools, fifth grade math, and I haven't gotten necessarily a, an explanation that, that, well, not that it's trying to satisfy me, but, you know, trying to get an analysis in regards to what it is, because, you know, and, and there was no mention in regards to whether the adoption of new math had anything to do with that, so I'm wondering whether.
There's a change in the catch.
So, do you want me to mention the school that I saw that on?
There were a couple of big jobs.
Again, again?
Just one thing that I'd like to comment about that is, I do feel that the first year, our teacher, I, I'm a big fan of bridges, I was also a fan of investigations, but I really understand how much bridges really is, is covering those things that the kids were missing, but the teachers had a learning curve, you know, we're doing math a lot, more than we ever have, as well as our number corners in the morning. I really foresee that this is going to be an incredible adoption, and I think it's going to make a big difference for kids. I know if I had learned this kind of math when I was a kid, I would have a lot more confidence, so I feel it's that, and I also feel that the, the change in scores for the state tests really made a difference for a lot of kids, that we're so close to, to cut scores, and so I think there's a combination of things happening at the same time, Common Core standards, a new adoption, a teacher learning curve, but I go into those classrooms now, and I've never seen the commitment to math like I'm seeing, and the excitement level of the kids, and those kids that used to just zone out. So, I do believe that it's a work in progress, and we are going to see much growth in the future.
Thank you. Again, and thank you again for that commitment to the 100%, I think that we need to, I think, strive for that even more, and I think, you know, if we set that as a goal, I think that we can meet it, but we have to do that stretch. So, thank you all for, for sharing all this information, and.
Say one thing?
Go ahead.
Wait for Mike, because it's on the TV. Okay.
I'm Kevin Bacon, I'm from Hosford Middle School, and I know one thing that's really important to the superintendent and also to the board, has been the over-referral of black and brown boys to self-contained special ed classrooms, and I just want to say that at Hosford, we have what's called a B, a B-room program, and to explain that acronym so I don't get in trouble later, that's what's called a behavior room, it's called a special learning center for behavior kids, kids with IEPs for behavior challenges, and we have our fabulous 14 of those students, and with the help of the district, you know, we decided that we were just going to blow that model up, and those kids were going to return this fall with full schedules like every other student, and I got to say that in doing that, we had to prepare the parents, we had to prepare the students, we had to prepare ourselves, myself and Marilyn, for, for that transition, but, you know, the staff has really embraced that, and those kids are, are 100% mainstreamed. We've been working with Mary Pearson, the director of special ed, along with Jeff Brown, who's our program administrator, and of course Larry, and, you know, we've seen a little bit of a rise in our, our discipline data as a result of this mainstreaming, but far and away, far and away, the benefits that we've seen from these students who, who were not getting core instruction from highly qualified teachers, you know, they were getting self-contained instruction, and once you move into the middle, the middle level, you know, that, that instruction is just more than one teacher can really handle to try to deliver science, language, arts, social studies, and math. So, those kids are out in those classes and, and doing well, and so we just want to, want to highlight that and let you know that, that, that some of that work that, that you wanted to see done is happening, and those kids are, are thriving, and they're going to be better prepared for high school, because once they left Hosford in eighth grade and went to their various high schools, all of a sudden, they were sort of turned loose into those academies, which are real supportive, but at the same time, it's just, that was the first time they were really out there with their peers, and so I just want to highlight that and say that before, before we adjourn.
Thank you for stepping up, and if we all can come to the front, we're going to take a photo as we usually do, and then we're going to take a five-minute break.